Roll call, Corey Self.
Present.
Don Bolia.
Present.
Glenn Virus. Hope Baucham.
Present.
Jed Beardsley. Kent Gibson.
Present.
All right, looks like we have a quorum, so we'll move on to organizational and procedural items. Do we have any discussed tonight?
Mr. Chairman, we did order badges, you all have them except for Don Bolia. For some reason, his was shorted in the delivery, so we will reorder his, actually that's already been done. And I think Mr. Curry would like to talk to you about procedural.
In this, we've had comments in the past, questions regarding the various criteria associated with approving or taking into consideration the variances, particularly the first one seems to be the one that's the biggest issue. There's been some conversation between council members and me that perhaps it may be helpful if we had a continuing education session, you know, for the board to talk about the various criteria to be presented by me as well as another lawyer, who you probably see before, and I would recommend Doug Dillard unless you all would have somebody else you would prefer to have join in this, just to discuss those items and to talk about the subjective nature of what you're looking at and the things you should really be taking into consideration. And that's really, that's really at your pleasure, certainly to do it and at the time you wish to do it.
Okay. I personally think that that would be something that would be helpful to the board. Does anybody else have any thoughts on it?
I think that would be as well.
Okay. You maybe want to just propose some dates and times to us and we can figure out a... Or would we need to do that in a work session or in a regular meeting, or how would that work for scheduling?
Well, I would suggest that it's going to take at least an hour. So if you wanted to commence a work session at 4:30 instead of 5:30, to allow for something like that, that could be done. Or if you wanted to do it separately, which I wouldn't think would be necessary. If we can, we can recommend a date and/or start looking at your calendars and when we come back into regular session, approve a date. Either, you know, it could be July, August, or whenever you wish to do it, and we'll work toward that.
Just so you know, we do have 10 cases for the next hearing as well. So I don't know if you would like to factor that into when you'd like to have an educational forum. I know it's very important that you have that, so...
Yeah, I wonder, would anybody have a problem with starting the work session at 4:30? Just so we can maybe consolidate everything into a day?
That would work better for me than trying to plan another different.
I agree.
Yeah.
If we could get Jed to be late again, then it would go pretty quick on the end. That's not for the record, though.
No, I mean, completely, and, you know, if we, we can budget an hour and if we don't get through it all, then we can, we can continue it.
Sure.
At another time and not try to mash everything up so that we, we really lose time within the work session for reviewing the cases.
I mean, I, I would appreciate that and find that very helpful.
So we'll try to set that up then for July, if that's okay with the board?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and so I will bring that up during the regular meeting during organizational and procedural. Will we need to vote on that or just announce it?
I, I would think that that's something within your discretion, Mr. Chairman, and we can announce it. But as long, and I think all the other board members have agreed with that.
Okay, all right. Well, then I'll just go ahead and make the announcement that we're going to plan on starting at 4:30 for the work session next month in order to, to do some training, continued education. All right.
No other procedural or organizational items, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, then we'll move on to unfinished business. I believe the first one is ZBA 14-20, Caliber Brookhaven.
Okay, just a quick reminder in terms of unfinished business, Walgreens will be coming before the board next month, in July. So that's just a friendly reminder.
Is that one of the 10 cases?
Including that, that would be 11.
Doesn't include whatever we...
Deferred on it.
Deferred on it.
Whatever occurs, whatever transpires today might have an effect on the number for next month.
Your, your case limit is based on new cases.
Correct, right. All right, so unfinished, we do have ZBA 14-20, that came before you last month. The board granted a deferral for 30 days for the applicant to work with the homeowners, especially Kona, the Kendrick Osborne Neighborhood Association. As of May 30th, we did receive two revisions that are included in your packets. One is a site plan that reflects, I guess, what you would consider a robust vegetation, vegetative screening along the property, the single-family to the rear of the Shell property. In addition to that, they presented, initially they presented the change to the building materials associated with the encasing, you could say, or the, the structure associated with the ATM during last meeting, but they did provide a copy for us and which we included. And it shows that the building materials, of course, minus the ATM, will be compliant with the overlay district. But if you, if you've read over the comments provided by staff, the staff's opinion would still stay the same for the fact that, again, what they're requesting, in particular with the ATM, would not be compatible with the intent of the overlay district, the Brookhaven-Petrie overlay district, which, and again, is to promote walkability, pedestrian accessibility, along with the, the expansion of the land, the walkway along Petrie Road as well as Kendrick. So again, this ATM is still focused on being vehicle-driven. And therefore, staff's recommendation has not changed and we're still moving forward with recommendations of denial for the four variances out of the six that are associated with the ATM. But we have, we are still sticking with the approval for the elimination of the loading space and also allowing a curb cut on Petrie Road.
So you mentioned with the spirit of the overlay with walkability, pedestrians, et cetera. And a lot of the feedback that I've seen come through in opposition to this has been regarding the curb cut particularly. Will you speak to that?
Yes, you know, in similar instances that came before the board where we felt that, again, they have an existing curb cut on Petrie. In addition to that, when we take into consideration the size of the lot, in order for safe vehicle or access in and out of the property, it would be more appropriate, in this case, to have two access points, one off of Kendrick and one off of Petrie. And that's why, again, more or less for safety purposes, we felt that it would be appropriate. In addition to that, it would be conditioned to a right-in, right-out only. Therefore, it eliminates the full access along Petrie Road, which would, we would, you know, staff would have the opinion that should help in terms of providing for more vehicle or pedestrian safety along Petrie Road. So that was the basis for our argument.
Wouldn't you think that Kona would object to only an entrance on Osborne such that more cars would be thrown onto Osborne?
Kendrick, yes. Right, and, yeah, there's always been complaints about Kendrick being sort of an access where people cut through Osborne through Kendrick. But in addition to that, though, again, on our end, not necessarily taking that into factor, but looking specifically at the site, again, it's just for safety accessibility upon the site itself. And if they do have a larger vehicle, in this case, let's say a trash truck or garbage truck comes into the site, to have that ability to sort of come in through one way and exit out the other and have that flow on the property itself, we felt that that would be appropriate in this case to allow and to move forward with an approval of the curb cut on Petrie.
So Ben, the recommendation, I guess it's a staff recommendation to be the right-in, right-out on the curb cut?
Yes, and actually, we do have the Public Works Director here, Richard Meehan, he could actually chime into that a little bit further.
I would love to hear, Richard, in, in light of the intent behind the overlay district being more pedestrian-friendly, is there any kind of, you know, empirical evidence that says that a right-in, right-out is more pedestrian-friendly? Because it seems to me, in all the right-in, right-outs I've, I've driven myself, if I'm pulling out of a business on a right-out, I'm looking to my left to see that no cars are coming and I'm pulling out. Seems to me I could very easily hit somebody walking up from my right.
Well, it's, it's more safer than a full-access drive.
Even though in a full-access drive, I'm looking both ways.
Yes, yeah, because in full-access drive, you're trying to more time a gap, time gaps from cars coming from both directions. So you're less likely to pay attention to what pedestrians are doing, especially if there's, if you see a gap coming, whereas on the right-out, you're only dealing with the gaps from one direction. So you're, you have, you got more opportunity to pull out, so you got more opportunity to hold up for pedestrians.
And let me just add that...
That's assuming I see that pedestrian.
Let's, let's kind of limit the work session to discussing any technical issues of the cases that, you know, about the paperwork or anything involved. But I think that would be a great question to ask during the, during the public meeting. Did anybody else have any questions about the revised drawings or anything else that's been added? All right, let's move on to the next unfinished business, which is ZBA 14-25, Carrera Homes.
Mr. Chairman, this too was deferred for 30 days. And in essence, they were to go back and to provide some revisions and to double-check on the setback associated with the lot to the left, the site plan in front of me to tell you which, the orientation of it. But initially, the original survey that was submitted referenced a single-story home where it was explained to them that currently there's a two-story home existing there. So if you look in your packet as part of the revised site plan that they submitted June 4th, they do show a two-story to the left. However, the setback, which was another issue that was brought up during the hearing, is, has remained the same. They're still reflecting 55.7 feet from the front of the two-story home to North Thompson. In addition to that, you'll see that the pool, you could consider it as a reconfiguration, but it does seem like it's been, a portion of the pool had been cut in order to show that there would be in compliance with the setback requirement for an accessory structure, which is a 10-foot setback. But even with that cut, you would assume that the, the impervious area would be reduced. However, the impervious area still remains the same and they're still moving forward with the request for the increased lot coverage from 35 to 36.9 percent. Based upon the latest revised site plan, staff felt that, again, there's still some discrepancies, there's still some information that is lacking, and therefore, we're still, staff is sticking with the original recommendation of denial for ZBA 14-25.
Is it, is it your opinion that this is an ASBIL or is this just another survey?
It's not, well, it's an ASBIL in the sense that the building and the detached garage is according to the permit that they received from us, the building permit.
Right, I guess the, the question that, my basis in the deferral was for, for an ASBIL so we could see exactly how it is placed on the lot. So, you know, this seems like another site plan, it's not actually, the house hasn't been located.
Right, to simply answer that for you, it appears to be the same site plan that was submitted with the initial request.
Okay.
Well, the, the one that we received June 4th in your packet, it does state that the plot information with a date referencing June 4th, 2014, on packet page 60.
It's packet page 60.
There's another one in there.
60.
That, that we'd be provided with an ASBIL, but it seems like it's a, another site plan.
And one other thing that's sort of, one that's different from the original site plan is that this one does not include the signature of the surveyor.
It does not?
It does not, so that, that's the other difference.
Okay. All right, any other questions on 14-25? All right, then let's move into new business, ZBA 14-28, BK Residential Construction.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the request is to reduce the front yard setback along Fern Circle from 30 feet to 22 and 1/2 feet to construct a new single-family detached residential dwelling. The subject property is a corner lot, so they're asking, it fronts on... Essentially, the building would be oriented toward Thompson Road. But again, the variance that's requested is off of Fern Circle. The required setback is 30 feet. The applicant is showing, is asking for 22 and 1/2, but as you can see, the closest point of the home from Fern Circle would be setback 23.9 feet. It may be that the applicant is accounting for possible, possibly overhangs. Again, this is just strictly dealing with the footprint and the foundation of the building, and that may be something that could be addressed by the applicant. In addition to that, staff did recommend approval based on the fact that the existing home is currently setback 12.3 feet from Fern Circle. With this request, they're still going to be setback further than what's currently existing there. And we felt that it's appropriate in that across Fern Circle, the subject, across Fern Circle, I don't have the address with me, they were approved with an administrative variance by the Department of Community and Development to reduce the setback along Fern Circle on their side from 20, from 30 feet to 27 feet. Again, and we felt that it was consistent with, with what's found out there in the corner. In addition to that, I wanted to highlight one additional note in regards to the condition. If you look at the staff recommendation, condition number one, page 64 of your packet, staff did recommend, did state that the site plan submitted as a date of April 1st, that was an error. We did receive multiple revisions from the applicant, but the correct site plan should be reflected as the May 30 date, which is in your packet. On page 73.
73. All right. Any questions on this one? All right, ZBA 14-29, Daniel Shipper.
Yeah, and if you, it'd be best to go to the site plan directly on page 92 of your packet. Essentially, the applicant is requesting to reduce the rear yard setback from 30 feet to 13.33 feet to construct a screen porch. The area in which they will be enclosing is an existing concrete patio. They do have a fireplace that's attached to it. Essentially, that's, they're not requesting an expansion of that patio area. And therefore, that's why you find some language in the report where we stated that, that it would be not increasing the degree nonconformity for the fact that currently, as it stands, the, the property is at 56 percent in terms of lot coverage. But what we noticed in terms of the overall development, if you were to look at an aerial of that development as a whole, this is not the only home that is exceeding lot coverage. And therefore, again, since they're not proposing any additional expansion and they're enclosing what's already existing, staff felt that it would, it would be appropriate and has recommended approval.
And because it's already existing, they would not have to apply for a coverage variance, is that?
Yes, it's already existing and they do not have to.
Okay. All right. Any questions on this one? All right, moving on to ZBA 14-30, Rockhaven Homes LLC.
Rockhaven Homes is requesting a variance to reduce the lot width from 100 feet to 90 feet to subdivide a single R100 tract of land to two. One thing I would state, per the city's zoning ordinance, lot width reflects both the street frontage as, as well as the lot width measurement requirement where you measure from the, the front yard setback. Another thing to quickly point out, we mentioned in the report, again, although the applicant does reflect 35-foot setbacks along the front, we cannot necessarily confirm it based upon the information that they provided. It is possible that they would have to apply an average setback in this case, we wanted to reflect that in the staff report. But overall, and also, and it's reflected in terms of the conditions, if you look at the single condition that we have on page 99.
If you're building two houses, to get back to that situation, which one are you building first to determine whether it's...
Well, we would need more information to determine if an average setback would apply.
Why wouldn't we just make it a condition that the one-on-one lot on the left would be going, be, be set back first?
Well, even without that condition, it would be a requirement during the building permit review phase where we would confirm based upon the information that's submitted that an average setback may be applied, may not be. It depends on the situation and in which, the way in which it's submitted.
If you wanted to build the one on the left first, there's no average of one, is that still a rule?
Yes, well, same thing we discussed, we don't do an, we don't have an average of one, but again, I think we discussed that thoroughly last.
My question is, does your staff's conditions say anything about front setback at all?
The staff's condition states, you know, it refers to the site plan from May 7th. In parentheses, we stated, however, the front yard setback will be determined at time of permitting and may not be consistent with the site plan. So that's how we're sort of...
A caveat, so to speak.
Exactly.
My next question is, I'm sure this looks like you could have a floodplain issue with that lot on number two on the right. And he doesn't show, he shows the culvert there, but he doesn't show where that water's going. Site conditions?
For the purpose of what's being requested before you, it's my opinion that you would not need that information. Again, that would be handled during the building permit review. Again, that's to the, you know, to the pleasure of the board to determine what information is required to move forward with any requests that, any requests that's been asked. But yeah, that's, that's valid, something that you could actually address with the applicant directly to get those answers.
How about the fact that it shows the adjoining house right on the boundary line? That's just a nonconformity?
Right, I mean, that won't necessarily impact the request nor their development, being that it's, it's an adjacent lot. It may be a nonconforming building on the adjacent lot, but thankfully, from what I see, it does not appear to encroach into the subject property. But to quickly move...
I know our county mayor would call a lot too.
But to quickly move on, again, staff recommended approval based on the fact that, again, although the lot width is being requested to be reduced to 90 feet, the lot size in itself would exceed the minimum requirement for R100, which is 15,000. You'll see that Lot 1 is just over 18,000, Lot 2 is over 16,000. So in essence, it feel, it also appears that the street frontage would meet that 100-foot requirement. We don't have, you know, all the necessary information to make that determination, but just looking at it, it may be, it appears that it's possible that they meet the street frontage of 100 feet. But if you look out to the site directly across Ashwood Court, there are two existing lots that do not meet street frontage or lot width in this case. One shows at 90 feet, another shows at 98 feet. So there is existing laws that do not meet the, the full requirements of the R100. And again, staff felt that is consistent with the area and has recommended approval of the request.
To the extent that we often make approval site plans specific, I'd be concerned about some sort of acknowledgement that we've approved the front, the front setback based on this drawing.
And I think that's what he's, he's saying he's covering in his, in the condition if we were to approve it. Basically stating that we're not agreeing to the setback shown on there, that that's something that would be addressed at permitting. I think so.
And typically, typically, the site plan is reflective of the request that's being made to the zoning Board of Appeals. Anything else that's not covered under a request directly to the board and that's not, you know, legally advertised and meeting all those requirements, then it won't necessarily come into play or be a factor in terms of when they come before us with a building permit.
What if we said this, instead of development of the property shall occur in accordance with the site plan, what if we said division of the subject property will occur in accordance? So all we're saying is, you can put the boundary line there, but all we refer to is development, division in accordance with the site plan, then we're making no comment at all about these structures he's drawn on there.
Well, it's sort of getting to a similar, similar aspect of what we did with the conditions, because the division is a secondary node, in essence, because, again, they're directly requesting a variance to the lot frontage or lot width.
It's not, it's currently two lots?
No, it's single, but they're not coming before you to technically to, you know, vary from the, the ability to subdivide, you could say, although they need this requirement or they need this variance in order to do so.
They're not asking the board to allow the subdivision of the property. They're identifying to the board the request for the variance to lot width. They cannot subdivide the property without the lot width variance. If this board grants the variance, then they would be able to subdivide, but it would be an administrative process reviewed by the staff that would then be recorded with the county for tax records.
So this variance doesn't approve the subdivision of the lot, too?
It gives them the ability to pursue the subdivision.
All right, ZBA 14-33, Kevin Nelson of Cobalt Contracting.
The request is to reduce the side yard setback from 7 and 1/2 feet to 3.3 feet to enclose the existing carport. The applicant is seeking to go through a wholesale redevelopment of the existing site and the existing home. If you have been out to the site and based upon the site plan as well that's been submitted by the applicant, it appears that they're not going to be encroaching closer into the setback. We felt that, considering that they're maintaining the existing setback gases and essentially enclosing the carport to accommodate an enclosed two-car garage, we felt that it was appropriate and then we recommended approval. One thing that I would note, in the letter of intent, it was unclear as to the fact that if they're going to add a second story on top of the garage, that may be something that could be addressed directly by the applicant, if that's something to take into consideration. In addition to that, we did state that there may be, they potentially could be an issue associated with building separation, but we did put the applicant on notice through what we stated in the report, which states the applicant is reminded that building separation material types require fire marshal review prior to the issuance of a building permit. So that was a concern that has been addressed in the staff report.
What happened to cases 31 and 32?
Case 31, after further review, it appeared that, that it was a case that cannot be brought before the zoning Board of Appeals. So we have discussed that issue with the applicant and they have, they understand the staff's position in regards to rejecting that application. In terms of 32, is associated with the stream buffer ordinance, and as you know... In terms of 32, is associated with the stream buffer ordinance, and as you know, as of March 25th, we adopted a new stream buffer ordinance, and there was a lot more information that was required of the applicant to submit before they were to go, if they were to come before the zoning board of appeals. We had that discussion with them and effectively were working with them to sort of either assist them in creating or coming up with a complete application or possibly looking to other options, but we're working with the applicant on that as well, and that's why those two have been removed.
All right, ZBA 1434, which is Haven REI.
ZBA 1434, there are three variances that are being requested. First is to increase the lot coverage on 35% to 50.4, also to reduce the setback for an accessory structure, in this case, the detached garage, from 10 feet to 7 feet, directly from the impact associated with the rear property line, and also to reduce the average front yard setback from 49.5 feet to 34.5 feet for front stoop and stairs. Of the three, staff felt that the reduction of the average front yard setback would be appropriate. If you go out to the site, there is a noticeable topographic, topographic change or a grade change from the street leading up to the front of the house. The access would be provided, or stairs would be needed in order to access the front of the home from the driveway. So we felt that, again, that would be appropriate and have recommended approval of the reduction of the average front yard setback. In regards to the lot coverage from 35% to 50.4, staff has recommended denial based on the fact that if we were, when we went back and reviewed the original building permit that was submitted, and I know that you received a letter from Larry Hurst, the property owner, he stated that the intent was always to incorporate a detached garage on the property. However, when the building permit came through the city and was approved, there was never a detached garage reflected on the plans.
Was there a garage on it?
No.
No, looking at the building, the building plans, there was never a garage incorporated into the plans, period, be it built into the home or detached.
Larry Hurst, the original applicant, did he own it, own the building plans or something?
I believe so. I can't necessarily confirm that.
Yes.
I believe so, yeah. Okay.
It was, I believe, he said it was a rental home.
Yeah, he addressed it in his letter.
The stairs that are already built out front, is that what they're asking for approval of?
Yes.
Does it bother you that they already built stairs?
Well...
It bothers him.
To go back, if you look at the building permit, that was initially approved. The average setback should have been factored into the equation in terms of the review of the front yard. But, again, sort of correcting that issue, but also taking into consideration the current sort of status of the property, there definitely is a grade change that would require that. In terms of the stoop, you know, is that the minimum required? Possibly, possibly not, it's hard to say, it's existing, but there is definitely a need for steps to lead into the house. But in terms of lot coverage, again, associated with the garage, staff felt that, again, that's not the, or there may be other locations that may be possible to relocate the detached garage where they could meet the 10-foot setback requirement. In addition to that, the lot coverage, they added additional sort of pavement that we felt that could have been reduced, to essentially reduce their lot coverage under 50%. What that calculation may have been, it's hard for us to say, but based upon the request, it appears that it's exceeding the minimum that's required based upon the requests that they have made, and therefore, we have recommended denial of the lot coverage increase as well as the reduction of the accessory structure.
Ben, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One, is it fair to say that the, without the variance, the approval of the variance for the front steps, they essentially have an invalid permit because the city issued a permit with the steps on the plan, we just didn't take it into consideration that they needed a variance at the time? Is that fair? Other question I had was, it seems to me the need for the steps is rather self, it's a hardship that is self-imposed, because the, while there's a grade change, the way they've built the house, they've dug out most of that grade change until the, you know, the front or side wall of the house. The reason they need the steps is because they put a front door on a second story of a house. I mean, call a spade a spade.
Well, I mean, there could have been many factors as to why there is a grade change, you know, maybe incorporation of a basement in the plans of what they wanted to build. But it's really hard to say, because if you take into consideration the adjacent property, that grade is apparent, that there is a steep incline from the road to the front portion of that home. So it's really hard to make that determination without seeing the, what the ASBIL may have shown in terms of the grade. That may have been a possibility where they actually dug in a little bit deeper to incorporate what you would consider, or you could say, a basement in two stories, or it could have been the existing topography of the site, based upon just adjacent...
Right, but looking at the adjacent property, you can see they dug out a significant portion of that topography.
Yes, yes.
Had they not done that, they would need much less of a encroachment for these steps.
Sure. Well, you know, they may still have required an encroachment, may have not been as far of an encroachment than they're requesting now or that they currently have. But yeah, it may be a possibility, it's really hard to say.
I would be curious what the original site plan they got permitted looked like.
I do have the original, oh, you mean the, what, the ASBIL of what was existing previously?
No.
Okay.
The permit that they got approved to build and how much impervious surface there was, you say they added, it looks like they added some concrete that wasn't there.
I do have it and I could show it to you, but obviously, they were approved, the building permit, based on the fact that they're meeting the lot coverage requirement of 35%.
You believe that today, the way they built it out in paper, it's within 35%? Or you think they could already be over 35%?
Based upon what they have out there is, based on the approved building permits, with the approved site plan showing that their lot coverage is 35%.
Has it, has it, I thought you said they added some concrete pavement.
They're proposing to add, and that's why they're requesting this increase in lot coverage, yes.
Have they built anything that's not compliant?
No, no, no. I believe they don't have anything there that's not shown on the approved set of plans that they have.
All right, moving on to the next case, ZBA 1435, Rock Haven Homes LLC.
ZBA 14-35 is a request to reduce the rear or setback from 30 feet to 15 feet to develop a 26-lot, single-family detached subdivision. Essentially, this, this development came before the planning commission and city council as a rezoning. They were approved to RA8 and they showed, again, a total, they were approved for a total of 26 lots. With the exception of lots 22, 23, 24, and 25, all the other lots will maintain frontage either on North George Hills, Goodwin, or East Roxboro Road. And in the packet, page number is 156. And again, the, the reason behind their request is with the, the product that they're proposing to be rear-loaded, they would like to have the ability to set the houses as far as possible away from the major thoroughfares. The major thoroughfares in this case are specifically North George Hills and East Roxboro Road, where the properties would back up internally to the site, so it would, it would not necessarily impact surrounding properties. However, I would like to say 22, 23, 24, and 25, although those lots derive frontage from an internal public street and it backs up to another subdivision that was rezoned through the city as well, it would not necessarily have an impact on those lots that they're backing up to for the simple fact that these are the ones, again, to the north...
Can you come about this, Ken?
Yes, the northwest, which is the Ami Mackey, they were approved, I guess, that may have been the second or third rezoning that was approved by the city. That's at the intersection of Wright Avenue, East Roxboro Road. But as you can tell, those are narrow, long, slim lots with the homes proposed to be closer towards Wright Avenue, so it won't necessarily have an impact, even with the reduction of the rear setback for 22, 23, 24, and 25, reducing it from 30 to 15 feet. And again, staff has recommended approval of the request.
What are you saying? They don't... How'd you get extra info?
Yeah, so...
I'm just kidding.
While you're doing that, can you clarify, if they're not asking for anything on the lots that are internal, internally facing, that leaves 22 lots, yet it looks like they're asking for variances on 13 lots out of the remaining 22? And because there's no addresses that I can see on, on this drawing, I can't tell which lots are asking for variance. Can you identify on this drawing which lots are in the variance application?
You treat all the lots as related to this request? All the lots that are shown on the site plan are requesting for that reduction in the rear setback?
Jed, the point of clarification, I think, that, that you need here, the, the addresses that are listed in the case are the previous homes that are there. This is an assemblage of properties.
I know, I drew a...
So those are the addresses of the assembled properties?
Okay.
Not of the actual new...
Right, those, those are the addresses of existing lots currently.
They're asking for a blanket 15-foot rear.
So they're backing for a blanket on this little one on right, all the ones on...
Every lot in the neighborhood.
Every lot.
Except these four.
No, they're asking for it on those four as well.
The only difference between everything else and those four is that the, the rear, reduction in the rear would impact internally to the development, however, 22, 23, 24, 25 would have but that plan.
I got it.
Okay.
It's kind of what I said in my email.
Right. And essentially, they're butting lots 11, 12, well, I guess, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. Okay, they're butting that, but as you can see, the homes are all oriented towards Wright Avenue.
Pushed back in this direction.
Well, those are the property line, those are the properties, or the property line for, so you see that corner on your northwest? Yes.
If you push, the houses would be set back more, but you're saying they're so far from these houses, it doesn't really matter. Essentially, yeah. So I think the point, this seems to be that the only lots that are affected by this are the lots they're building.
Correct, exactly what you stated in your email.
Keep that, Mike. You want to use it.
I think we're fine.
All right, moving on to ZBA 1436, Kenneth Wood.
ZBA 1436 is a request to reduce the front yard setback along Remington Road from 35 feet to 31, and this is, the site plan?
Packet 171.
Yeah, and if you look at packet page number 171, it gives you a close-up of what the request is considering. So essentially, the subject property is an existing corner lot that fronts on Colt Drive as well as Remington. There is an existing home on the site that's been vacant for several years, possibly 67 years. With that said, the applicant purchased the property and is seeking relief to be able to occupy an existing structure. And based upon the fact that the corner lot, we do not apply average setbacks to corner lots, we apply the district required setbacks for our 100 zoning districts, which is 35 feet. And essentially, as you can see, the furthest encroachment as existing is 4 feet, so they'll be maintaining a setback of 31 feet from Remington. Based upon the facts and based upon that the structure is existing, we felt that, that, again, based upon the request that's been made, it would be appropriate, considering, again, the existing status of the property, and therefore, we have recommended approval. And as you can see, there is a stream buffer that's impacting the site, but the building in itself and the impervious area that's existing does not encroach into the stream buffer, which is an added bonus as well, and the existing vegetation along the stream buffer would remain. And in addition to, as the applicant alluded to in their letter of intent, they're not looking to expand the property, they're looking to utilize and occupy the existing building as is.
You sent out this email from Michael Evans, which seemed very compelling to me, and I wanted to make sure everybody got a copy or noticed it or saw it. I like the voice of these.
Yeah, and Mike Evans sent us that, and of course, we also did receive opposition from Mr. Murphy, so that should be taken into consideration as well.
What was your opposition?
Sorry?
What was your opposition?
There is history associated with the site, and I'm sure Mr. Murphy would explain a little bit more to the details of that, but essentially, the issue is the application of an average setback on a corner lot. He's of the opinion that the average setback should be applied, where as a city, we have moved forward, as it states, again, in 27788 of our zoning ordinance, A is specific to an average setback requirement, but if you go to subsection C, there's a separate note associated for corner lots specifically where it states that the required setbacks should be applied, and therefore, the city does not apply average setbacks to corner lots.
Is that his only objection?
There may be more, but that's the, the main sort of objection that I would like to highlight.
Have you ever lived in this house?
No.
It was a home that was under construction and never completed.
Yeah. The litigation appeared to get into trying to separate it into two separate lots, that failed, and so this approval would put that to rest as well.
Well, that's already been put to rest. That appeal went before the DeKalb County Zoning Board of Appeals, wherein Mr. Murphy appealed the, the approval of the subdivision. The ZBA found that the subdivision was incorrect and therefore, it became null and void, I believe at that time. But during that process, which I believe took over a year to get to that point, the builder continued to work and construct on the property, and essentially, that's what you have left there. Yeah. And also, you know, just, I did some additional calculations, even if we were to apply the average setback requirement on this lot, based upon the measurements, it appears that, again, we don't take the average of one, and therefore, based upon that, the average setback would not come into play.
Okay. All right, and before our last case, do you need to...
Yep, I need to recuse myself from the last case on the agenda. Step in the back?
Yes. Ad-Love is 38.
Are you a customer? Do your kids go there?
Not only do my kids go there, but I co-chair the, not only do my kids go to the daycare there, but I co-chair the Parents Association Committee that is attempting to build the decks.
All right, and if you could pull up page 232 in your packet, you'll see the survey submitted for the proposed request. The request for ZBA 14-37 is a variance to reduce the setback requirement for a structure related to a place of worship, in this case, a church, from 75 feet to 12 and a half feet. And if you have read over the letter of intent, it states that, I believe, is a state agency requirement that sort of... requirement that sort of has come into play, and that's the basis of the request by Brookhaven United Methodist Church, or the Brookhaven UMC Child Development Center. And as you can see, there's, there are already existing structure, a school or educational building, as well as a shed, that is located much closer to the property line than the proposed deck. And in addition, in addition to that, the proposed deck would be utilized during school hours only. It's to provide for outdoor access for toddlers. I believe in the letter of intent, it stated that there is an existing concrete ramp, but the accreditation agency of the state felt that it would be inappropriate, unsafe for children to access that, to get onto the, to the outdoors, and therefore, they have proposed this, the outdoor deck player area. And based upon the existing structures, the existing environment, and the, the built-out of the property, we felt that it would be appropriate with what's existing there and have recommended approval of the request.
Okay.
Clarify on this drawing on page 233, exactly where this addition...
The 233, if you look at that, to the bottom right, you'll find educational addition?
Yeah, is it, is it there?
It's on the right bottom-hand corner.
Building of that building? Fence, there's, it's behind a chain link fence, right?
Yeah, there's a chain link fence that separates the church property from the adjacent residential dwelling.
Yeah, the front sidewall.
Oh, and the front sidewall, yes.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody have any further questions? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I'm going to adjourn.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor, please signify or raise your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned.